Well, good afternoon. Good afternoon. Thanks for being here today. We appreciate it. We know that you're busy people, but it's been a long time since we've had a town hall meeting. And I'm so grateful that our board has said, yes, we need one. And so thanks for being here. Join me in our opening prayer. Let's go to that place within where we know and we feel that divine presence. We feel that presence today as love itself expressing through each and every one of us. And we give thanks for the opportunity to be here to share ideas, to participate, to allow spirit within to speak through us, to be guided and directed by that whole spirit within. We're grateful for our governance body, grateful for our congregation, all the wonderful volunteers here, all the things, the staff, all the things that make Unity Minneapolis what it is. And we're grateful. And together we say, thank you, God. Together, thank you, God. And so it is. Our Board of Trustees, if you see it on your monitor, those of you that are streaming with us, we're grateful for our Board of Trustees. I'll begin introducing them from left to right. Michael Showalter is our treasurer, Teresa Beldon is our secretary, I'm the senior minister, Nancy Merritt, the vice president, Judith Killian, assistant treasurer, Margie Olson, president, and Greg Peterson, member at large. Could we applaud our Board of Trustees? Thank you. And now that we've applauded them, I'm going to invite you to stand, please. Okay, those of you that are here, stand, and let's applaud them again. Okay, yes, yes. You know, the first slide of the schedule talks about our current state. And you could probably tell me as much about our current state as I could, but it falls onto my shoulders and I'm honored to share a few things with you. It's in 20 and 21, it's been a time of learning to do church, as we would in the ministerial field say, do church. We are learning to do it in a new and different way. As we've begun to regather, approximately one-third of our congregation is in our sanctuary. And approximately two-thirds of our are in streaming, watching the service either in person or on demand. For our church leaders in particular, this is a time of readjustment. And it certainly has been a time of learning to do things in a new way, and at times discouraging. When I talk to pastors of any size church, but particularly this size church, and in their most candid moments, despite returning in-person services for months or longer, they tell me the same thing that we are experiencing. In-person attendance is still running, about thirty-five to fifty percent of what it used to be pre-pandemic. Online attendance has gradually dropped. As you know, when we started this pandemic, it was off the roof. And now it too has gradually dropped. People that they've known and trusted for years have left the church. And unfortunately, that's been a few cases here as well. Ministers seem to be criticized for being too political, not political enough, pro-mask, anti-mask, saying too much about vaccines, saying too little about vaccines, or being too left, or being too right, whatever the "two" is. And I have experienced that as well, as part of your spiritual community. And all of this feedback has been given in love, in love. But you quickly learn, you cannot please all the people all the time. And so unfortunately, you know, everybody in this church is not on the same page. Have you noticed that? It's different. But also, there are hopeful signs. New people are coming. You saw our class of new members today. New people are coming. There are stories of life change. Life is changing for many. Not everyone is left. Thank you, God. And besides, regardless of the conditions, your senior minister here has been called to ministry. And your senior minister here will continue to minister as long as spirit has called me to minister. And I want to thank our associate ministers as well. They too have been called to ministry. Also, my dear friends, it's been a year of heart-to-heart connections and community regathering. We have had small groups and classes, as well as other ways to connect. We're saddened that our youth have not totally returned, but I see that happening as well. Part of it is safety, and part of it is just Zoom fatigue. It's a year of transforming lives worldwide through exceptional services, music, prayer support, and spiritual education. We now offer a choice. We offer, of course, the in-person services and also the virtual services, either through Zoom or live streaming, Zoom classes, galore. Did you know that we have five Zoom accounts in order to meet the needs of our community? At one point, we had six. So we continue to do church in a new way. This past year, for most of us, it has been a call for patience, compassion, and great love. This year has been a year of saying goodbye to many of those that we love. Our community has experienced a loss of fifty-six, not directly involved in our community, but some way attached to our community. Seventeen were involved in some way in this community. Obviously, we've done celebration of life services, more than I've ever done. We have also found new ways of doing weddings. I have to laugh because we found new ways, because when the bride and the groom is this far apart, initially, it's amazing to me. Anyway, this was early on. New weddings, we found new ways of doing christenings. And yes, we've even found new ways of doing pet blessings. We have welcomed over thirty-three new members and installed these members in our community in 20 and 21. And I think that's worth applauding. Thirty-three new members. We have, all staff positions are now filled. And we are blessed to retain all of our staff through this pandemic. That was one of my personal goals, to retain our staff. Reverend Jeanette did retire, and Reverend Kevin came on board as a half-time minister. And do you realize that Reverend Tony came on board and attended two services before we shut down? Two. Reverend Tony's done an amazing job of getting to know our congregation. Thank you, Reverend And because of you, in these challenging times, we continue to transform lives. We continue to do that. And I am amazed at the things that I hear in the line as people exit, or when I say, welcome, I don't remember seeing you. They'll often say, this is my first time here, but I've been with you for six months online. And I think we're seeing that in our church right now. We're seeing people coming back that we have never seen, but they've been with us. And that is our advantage of transforming lives through technology and through streaming. We've certainly stayed on top of our regathering. And I believe Nancy Mello is going to talk a little bit about how we went about making some challenging decisions on how we were going to regather and when.
Hello, all. So as you recall, we returned to regathering in June. It's an exciting time. There was a fair amount of care that went into bringing us back together. So I want to acknowledge the many, many people on our staff who supported that. Once we returned, we created a team to manage protocols and how we were going to interact with each other in the building. Our regathering team was staff members, Reverend Pat, John Southam, and myself served on that team. We had Board of Trustees members, Teresa Beldon and Nancy Merritt joined us on that team. And we reached out to our congregation for special resources. Kevin Florence joined our team. I wrote this down. He is environmental health, safety, and risk control manager at Lando Lakes. We also reached out to doctors, et cetera, early on to get feedback on what should we be tracking, what should we be monitoring and watching. This team meets weekly. We monitor the COVID numbers. We monitor the trends, the percentage of positive tests, to figure out best ways to protect the safety of the staff, the volunteers, and all the congregation. Almost every week, there are new considerations for us. Hey, we'd like the families to get together. How can we do that and meet our protocols? Hey, the choir really wants to perform. How can we do that? So we're constantly getting together, discussing, how do we make this work, again, to have the most church that we can, with knowing that safety is our first priority. And I agree with Reverend Pat. It's hard to come up with protocols that everybody loves and says, these are perfect. So we send a thank you to all of you for wearing your mask, covering your nose and your mouth. It makes sure that we can continue to gather in person, which is, I think, a huge gift to all of us. So thank you all.
Good afternoon. Good to see you. I get the fun couple of slides. The first slide is just about thank you. And we've had a challenging year. People have gone through a lot of challenges, and we are in such a strong position, you're going to see shortly, financially. And so it's just a big shout out and thank you to everybody for being part of the flow of prosperity in this community, the giving that's occurred. The gratitude is huge. And it's amazing, because you don't see that. I mean, the reports coming in from other places, that's not necessarily the case. So we're really a blessed community. And when we say, you know, one of our values is that of prosperity, it is. And we're proving it every day. And so a big thank you and gratitude to everybody for being part of that in this last year, being a challenge the last couple of years. And then the second slide, after saying that, is, if we want to move the slide, there we go, is to say, and we're coming up on our year-end giving campaign. And we had one last year, and we're going to do that again this year. It is part of our budget. We do plan on that when we do our budgets each year. But one of the things we emphasized last year, and we really want to emphasize again this year, is we're all in this together. The size of the gift is not as important as being a participant in that process, and being part of the community of giving, and feeling that your gift matters, period. You're part of that flow, you're part of that generosity and giving. And so we're going to have a year-end campaign again this year, and we're going to ask for everyone to participate. Every gift matters, no matter what the size is, and to be a part of our community and join together in something that's a little bit above and over what you would normally do in your giving each year. So think about that this year. We'll be coming up and kicking off that campaign and be asking for those year-end gifts, and consider what yours should be for yourself. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Sheri, who's going to talk to us about our financial status
Thank you, Nancy. Oh, can I see that? Oh, I get to present good news here. It's pretty clear to see from this slide that we are beating our budget projection for income this year. In fact, the amount that we're beating it by is the generosity of our whole United States community in participating in the PPP loan program. That put us over and above our budget this year. We were quite conservative as we developed our budget for 2021, recognizing we didn't know what was going to happen with the pandemic and getting back to church. But because so many of you participate in consistent giving, we're able to depend on your giving, and we can actually plan and spend money. On the spending side, we have controlled our spending, and in fact, spent less than we have been budgeted to spend. And that's a good thing. Every month, the finance team gets together, we review the financials, we talk about the challenges that might be coming, opportunities that we would see, and then we make recommendations to the board. We also help inform and develop the budget for the coming year, which is what we're working on right now. As we move into November and December, these are our most challenging months as far as the budget goes. We do depend, as Nancy said, on that year-end giving. It is budgeted, and our budget goes way up. So we invite you to consider what you can do and participate in the year-end giving. And I guess this is where we have a pause for questions, if anyone has a question
Sheri Ziploff is chair of our finance committee, and we appreciate her greatly. I'd like to introduce our Facilities Transformation Group. And I'm going to invite you to stand. Please hold your applause until they've completed stent, also stood. Margie Olson, Mike Smith, Nancy Mello, Sue Warner, Patty Shivik, Greg Peterson, and yours truly. We thank you for your service. You may be seated. You know, when I arrived at Unity Minneapolis, I know it's hard to believe, fifteen years ago, I instantly fell in love with this community. I love that we are open and welcoming and inclusive community, and that wherever you are in your spiritual journey, you are welcome here. And I cannot tell you how many people have told me that they are here because of that one line, wherever you are in your spiritual journey, you are welcome here. We've accomplished many things to be proud of, including an expanded adult education program, full-time youth and family ministry, pastoral care services, twenty-plus prayer chaplains, ASL interpretation, interpreter at services, award-winning choir and music, live streaming, a dedicated staff that love Unity Minneapolis, a Board of Trustees that serve with pride, and a retired mortgage. Now, over twenty-one months with a worldwide pandemic, the vision for this community still lives. And in my opinion, you might remember that twenty-one months ago, or even a few months before that, maybe two years ago, we had this vision of a transformed facility that helped us meet our objectives as well. And I've often said during this pandemic, and I've said it to many of you, thank God, we didn't have a shovel in the ground. Thank goodness, we didn't have a shovel in the ground. Much has changed, and I'm even more proud of our community, our leaders, our amazing staff, our volunteers, our people. Together, we've responded with creativity, we've responded with faith to continue and even grow our ministry in new and exciting ways. And all of this has happened during the most challenging times that I can ever remember in twenty-eight years of ministry. And yet I know that we today have not reached our full potential as a spiritual community. And, oh my goodness, our full potential, I believe, is to truly transform the world. And we can do that. Now and in the future, our facility, now and in the future, our facility will be an important resource to our mission of transforming lives, pandemic or post-pandemic. I love our building. And yet, you too know that it has many challenges. You know them. We won't name them one by one. And you also know that our spiritual community has wrestled with these issues and challenges for decades. I believe that God is now bringing us to a new season, and it's a new opportunity where we are being challenged to take a greater step in faith than we've ever taken before. We continue to envision and evaluate how we can transform our facility with fully accessible and beautiful spaces, thoroughly equipped to serve this ministry during the challenging days and in years to come. While we do not know the exact cost, we anticipate this project to be somewhere around $2.5 million. Those of you might remember that pre-pandemic, we had looked at $5.2 million. And this pandemic has helped our Facilities Transformation Team to review and meet and review and meet and review and meet, so that we could provide those things that we said we would. Our vision includes a fully accessible facility, flexible spaces, a hybrid office environment, and technology that is needed in a new hybrid church environment. So just for a moment, have the courage to imagine with me tools needed to help transform the world. Have the courage to imagine a truly welcoming, just close your eyes a moment, imagine a truly welcoming facility for all that are here and those yet to come. Our building will be completely accessible for everyone throughout the building, no exceptions. And imagine with me, again, upgraded technology throughout our facility that will enable us to reach more people with our life-transforming message. Imagine, beautiful space, a beautiful space with ample room to accommodate everyone and celebrate spirit, and celebrate radical, radical hospitality. Yes, for the next two years, my dear friends, we have the opportunity to enter a season of our church where we are all called to have the courage, not only to imagine, but also have the courage to participate and to be all in. All in for our family, all in for our community, all in for the thousands yet to come, and all in as we impact the entire world with our transformational teachings. I believe, again, this is a God vision. The word this morning was divine order. Things happen in divine order. It's still a God vision. All in our community, we are called to be a part of it. So my dear friends, I invite you to pay attention today using the power of imagination, and allow the Facilities Transformation Team to show you what we've been working on. Let me assure you that we took all of the data that we had pre-COVID. We took all of that data, and we still incorporated it into a facility, the possibilities of a facility that meets these needs that we promised you. Hey, Mike Smith, we appreciate you. Welcome to the platform. Yes.
Thank you, Reverend Pat. That was amazing. We have handouts here that we're going to pass out right now. Some of the drawings may be a little bit hard to see on the screen. And there's a place on the back of each page in the handout where we would love to get your feedback and comments. So as we go along with the presentation, if you have thoughts, please jot them down for us. We'll collect them at the end here. And for those of you that are live streaming, the chat on the Unity website is active. Jay Berger is monitoring that. We will absolutely capture all of the comments that you write into the chat. And during question and answer period, Jay will read your questions out here for us as well, too. So I am so excited to share this plan. I've been waiting for months to do it, and I want to just tell everybody, every interaction that I have at church. So we're going to start with a slide that's up here, with the site plan. So this is the overall view of the property. The blue area on that plan shows a new two-story addition that our architects have designed for us. That addition has new offices, an elevator, new stairways, new bathrooms on both floors, two new multipurpose classrooms. And for all of that functionality that we're adding, I think it actually has very little impact on the green space, which is feedback that we heard loud and clear last time as well, too. We want to maintain as much green space as possible. I think some of you that may be newer to Unity may not be aware that Unity actually owns the residential property on the left-hand side of the slide here, just to our west. And we rent out that house. That property was purchased many years ago to provide room to expand if we need it. And that is still available for us. So let me show you what that new addition is going to look like from the outside. And I think this is one of the most exciting parts of this plan. So here is the concept that the architect developed for us for the outside of the building. And personally, I love this. I think it's beautiful. One of the things that I like most is that it'll provide a really prominent entry for the church. So first-time visitors, people that are coming to the church for business meetings and that type of thing, when we say, we'll meet you at the front door, it's going to be obvious where our entrance is. That's a challenge today. And you can see on the addition, too, I love the windows. I'll show you the floor plan here next, but the windows on the first floor in the front are new offices for Reverend Pat and Nancy. You may notice up on the second floor, there's going to be a beautiful new conference room and classroom with an outdoor deck, too, that I'm excited about. And then another really nice conference room with windows on the back of the second floor. So let's take a look at the first floor plan on the next slide. So I'll walk you through this. But like Reverend Pat said, one of our primary focuses, our main commitments, was accessibility. And this new first-floor plan is all on one level. So let me walk you through the building. So as we go in, the new front entrance at the sidewalk level, you'll come into the entrance, the vestibule there. And you can either go up several steps up to the garden court level, or we'll have the elevator right there inside of the entrance level. The elevator is going to have doors on both sides, so you can enter from the sidewalk level, and then either go up that three or four feet to the garden court level, and then out the other door, or go all the way up to the second floor. So as you come out of the elevator, if you turn to the left, that will be where the office reception space is. So very much accessible and obvious where it's at compared to today. We'll have three new offices there in the front of the addition, a large office for Reverend Pat, which is about the same size, square footage as his current office, and Connie's reception space, and an office for Nancy, our executive director. Coming out of the office areas, there's a hallway with an exterior door, which is something that our ministerial staff asked for. That allows the ministers and staff to come and go. So if there's a large event going on, they can come and go without having to walk through a group of people in the building. And people can come in to visit the staff for private meetings and stuff through that door as well. And then large new bathrooms for the men and the women, too. And one of the things that I really like about this plan for the restrooms, too, and it was input from Sue Warner on our team, is you'll notice that there's kind of a zigzag entrance into the bathrooms, which is absolutely the best way that we can do it for accessibility. So there's no door to push open, but you still have privacy in the restrooms. So fortunately, we have the space in this new addition to be able to do that as well, too. Coming back down the hallway and into the garden court, I'm really excited about these changes as well, too. And really, one of the primary things here is that because we're going to take out the hump that we have hump that we have in the center of the building, you know how you have to go up the stairs to go to Connie's office and then back down the stairs to get into Friendship Hall? That whole elevated area in the middle of our first floor is completely going away. Those offices where Connie and the visitor's office are going away, and we'll be able to expand the space in Friendship Hall. And our plan is to pretty much put up a whole wall of glass between the garden court and Friendship Hall. So glass windows and glass doorways, and I'm excited about Friendship Hall will be bigger, new flooring, all-new surfaces, and I think that having natural light on that one end of the room will really help it make it feel a lot less like a church basement. So another fun thing in the garden court is our architects are planning to expand the garden court out to the front windows of the building. So the place where the ramp is right now that you come up, they're going to raise that floor and take out the inner wall of glass, and I think that'll make just really nice places to gather right out to the windows before and after church. So from the garden court, if we go back towards the kitchen, the space that is currently Reverend Pat's office is going to be flex office space, shared office space, for John Southam and Anthony. And we're finding in today's environment, more and more businesses are sharing workspaces that people don't necessarily need permanent spots. The space that is currently the women's restroom, we are planning, thinking about technology needs going forward, will be a video production room. So all those informational videos that Reverend Pat and the staff put together for us will have a place and the equipment to be able to produce those. We think that we can potentially have some other working space in that room as well, too. The plan for the kitchen is to put in all-new cabinets and finishes to update that space. It's tiny on your floor plan, but we also plan to make a little pass-through opening above the counter and under the cabinet so that we can pass dishes back and forth into the dishroom without having to carry them around into Friendship Hall. Oh, another thing, too, with that steep stairwell right now that comes down by Reverend Pat's office is completely going away. And so with the bigger Friendship Hall and that stairwell going away, there'll be room inside the doors and in that hallway to put coat racks right on either sides of the doors, so then we won't have to have those portable port racks taking up space out in Friendship Hall. Okay, well, let me just quickly mention this, too. The space that's currently the men's bathroom, back here between the bookstore and going into Friendship Hall, and a whole new stairway going up to the second floor, all of that space underneath the stairway in the men's bathroom becomes new storage, which will be great for the choir risers and extra chairs and choir equipment. Then coming back out into the garden court, the bookstore, we're able to expand, which was a lot of feedback that we got last time on the last design, because those workstations that are in there now moved to that flex office space. And something Patty shared with us from her office space, we planned to put another glass wall up in front of the bookstore with sliding glass doors, so we'll have great visibility and traffic flow in and out of the new bookstore along with that additional space. So before I talk about the sanctuary, I just wanted to mention, back, boy, it's probably four years ago now, when we were interviewing the different architects, one of the architects that we gave a tour to said something that really stuck with me, and he talked about how a well-designed church should be like a small-town square. You should be able to walk into the square and see where the church is and the city hall and the library and the restaurants. And I think that we've accomplished that with this new design. When you walk in the front door of this new design or into the garden court, you're going to be able to see where the sanctuary is and the bookstore and easy access and flow into our social space into Friendship Hall. And when people ask, "Where's the office or the bathrooms?" We can just point across Friendship Hall, and they'll be right there, too. So I'm excited about that with this also. So the sanctuary, super-important space. Probably the main change in here, and especially from an accessibility perspective, is we're going to significantly reduce the slope of the floor. It's difficult to watch people struggle with that every Sunday. The floor currently has a slope where it drops one foot every seven feet that you move, and the plan is that it's only going to drop one foot every 20 feet. So it's about one-third as steep as it is today. And then because the floor will start at the same level that it is now, the platform here is going to raise up about three feet to be the same height as the back of the floor, and then this real gentle slope down and just a couple of steps up onto the platform. If you look over on your plan over on the window side, the plan is to keep the floor all at the same level for accessibility. So right from the garden court level, there'll be a level floor all the way around onto the platform. And then the platform is going to be a little bit larger than it is today. It's going to extend all the way over to the windows, so we'll have more flexibility with the space on the platform. We're planning to replace all of the pews with auditorium-style seating, and we haven't picked out exact seats yet, but Van Man has talked to us about a seat design where the seats and the armrests flip up and down. The seats will be wider. In fact, I think they're about three inches wider than the space that we have between the armrests on our pews right now. And we'll be able to fit in almost the same number of seats that we have today. Oh, and another thing, too, that we've heard feedback, is our center aisle is going to be a foot wider as well, too, to make it easier for bridal parties to walk down the aisle together. Oh, and one thing I almost forgot to mention, too, we've got some minor issues right now where this back cinder block wall is starting to bow a little bit from water issues in the back corner. And so we've talked to the architect about the best solution to that is to replace this wall, but we're excited about that because of the opportunity to design a whole new look on the back of the platform and to install a large LCD projection monitor. We'll be able to project lyrics for songs and artwork and make that a part of the service. Okay, I think I covered everything there. Let's go to the second floor. Yeah, Hans. Well, you know what? Here, microphone, so that the livestream folks can hear you.
Big bookstore.
So you asked if you could have a coffee shop in the bookstore. Write it down on your feedback form. Anything's possible. Second floor, let's start as you come up the elevator again and talk about the new addition. So there's a large lobby space as you come up the elevator, and as you go to the left is the new classroom that I mentioned at the front of the building. I think that's going to be one of the most used rooms in the building. We'll have windows on two sides. It'll be set up for technology and streaming. There'll be a door from the hallway and a door from the classroom out onto the new second-floor deck. And then also from that elevator lobby will be access to new bathrooms on the second floor as well. So working our way around the hallway, many of the rooms on the front in the middle of the building stay the same. The Youth and Family Ministry Office, Cassidy's office stays in the same place, but it's a little bit smaller because we're going to put an aisleway in between what's currently the accessible bathroom upstairs and the Youth and Family Minister Office into another really nice multipurpose room. We think that this will probably be the room that we use for our meditation room because we lose the current meditation room with the new addition and putting in the elevator. I already mentioned that that bathroom will become an office for Reverend Toding, currently associate minister, which will be a nice space with an outside window. The stairs go away there, which provide for a little bit larger lobby when you enter in that northwest door. Something that I, somebody on the team caught, in both of the entrances on the upper floor, on the west side, there's a set of wooden doors and then just a single glass door, which is kind of a choke point, and we're going to put double glass doors in both of those, which will get more light and easier traffic flow in and out. And then another thing I'm excited about, too, is our plan is to put up a partition wall at the end of the Fillmore Room and to take out the two sets of wooden double doors on that hallway. It's always felt very awkward. If there's a meeting or anything going on in that room and you want to move around the second floor, you either have to walk all the way around or felt like you were interrupting in there. And by putting up that partition wall, that I think will have a mix of panels and glass as well, will have full circulation without any doors all the way around the second floor. Then going over towards the east side, I mentioned we'll have a whole new ADA-compliant stairwell that'll be wider and nice gentle steps for going up and down. We're going to keep those two bathrooms there and particularly keeping the bathroom on that northeast entrance right next to the nursery. Also, more feedback that we got from people is the desire to have a larger nursery space for the infants and toddlers. And so our plan is to take the current nursery along with the office that our associate ministers have had. We'll take down that partition wall, make the nursery bigger, and then as you go into the room there on the north wall, we'll have cabinets. We're planning to install a sink for the infants and diaper changing and hand washing and a changing table, along with some nice clean storage area space in the nursery. And then we're also planning to move our livestream equipment up to the office that Reverend Tony is currently using, which is right up here with the window. And then that'll allow us to put the soundboard back into the booth in the corner, and the folks that are running the livestream then can communicate a little bit easier and talk on their headsets and manage the livestream. So those are all the changes that we have planned. And again, we would love to collect your comments on these worksheets. Feel free to turn those in and send us your comments from the livestream. And now let's go ahead and open up for questions. We have, so that the livestream folks can hear, we've got a microphone up front if you have questions, and Cassidy has a microphone that she can walk around as well.
Testing, testing, testing. Just curiosity, so the livestreaming that will be moved up into the room upstairs, does that mean all of the corner equipment and station will be also displaced upstairs as well, leaving more room down here?
No, we're going to keep the sound booth down here. That needs to be in the room to be able to adjust the microphones, the sound coming from the microphones.
Got it. And I was just curious about any development of like the outdoor space at all?
We haven't really gotten to that point yet, other than mentioning to the architect that we would like to talk about that as we get further along in the plans about how to create flexible use spaces outside as well, too. But I think at some point, we'll end up working with a landscape architect to talk about how to do that. But we're excited about the fact that we still have a lot of green space, that we can think about those things in the future.
And will the upper parking lot still be kind of designated for parking?
That's the plan right now, is the upper parking lot will stay largely the same. We have started to talk to them about what are some options about how we could expand parking when we need to do that.
Thank you.
Well, here, I'll just say, Edna's asking, "When do we plan to start this?" We've just started to map out the schedule, and right now it looks like basically the next year, 2022, is going to be, first of all, we're going to do, we've hired a company to help us with the capital campaign, and they're going to do a feasibility study for us and give us a report about how much money they think we can raise as a church. And then once we make that decision, early spring, to move forward, then we've got like six months of work to do with the architects, to do all the construction drawings, to start applying for city permits. And our plan would be to start construction early in 2023, which Van Man is telling us is going to take about nine months and be ready to move into the new building end of 2023 or early 2024. So it's about a two-year process, Edna. So Edna's asking, "Will the church be closed during that period?" And because there's so much heavy remodeling inside the building and we're pretty much touching every part of the building, we will have to be closed for about nine months. And our plan, and part of the good news is the pandemic, we've learned that we can do remote church, but we're also planning to look for space to lease, too, so that we'll have a place to continue to meet in purpose and to have class, hold classes and that type of thing. Jay?
So we do have a question from Mary Burton's client around the stream, and she asked, "Where would Reverend Kevin Houdala's office and/or other part-time staff's offices be located?"
So the plan is, and this is what Kevin wants to do as well, too, is to use the flex office space. That's the way that he's been used to working in his career. So the flex office space will accommodate that. Tony has, here, Cassidy's coming.
It looks like there's like about 192 places inside the sanctuary for people. How does that match with the number of people that this space uses? Is it about the same?
Do you remember Reverend Pat, the numbers inside the sanctuary, I think, used to be 238, but we took out a pew back here so that we'd have room for sign language interpreter and the minister chairs, and we took out a pew in the back so that we'd have room for the livestream camera and the sound booth. So we've already removed some seats from here, and I think the seating that they told us is still a little over 200, actually. 233, Nancy? Yep.
Can you give a little more clarity about the second floor? I can't see on this little drawing what all those rooms are. Are they all Youth and Family rooms?
Oh, sure. Yep. So on the second floor, near the windows, those are currently the Youth and Family Ministry classrooms. So there's kind of that big room in the center for the younger kids. The, what do we call it? Is it the Y O U room? The Y O U room, they're over closer to the livestream equipment, is going to stay pretty much the same size. And in the middle of the building, we have a room now that the prayer chaplains use and for counting money on Sunday mornings. That's going to stay. The doorway just moves over closer to the lobby. The room in blue there in the middle is the Midwest classroom. That one will stay, and again, the doorway just moves to the center hallway. And then the green room next to the stairway is where Maggie, our accountant, sits, and that plan is that that will stay as Maggie's office. Okay? I'm sorry, Nancy? Oh, so the Unity room, the other conference room that we have upstairs, that one goes away and will be replaced with the two new conference rooms that we have.
I know at one point, we were looking at expanding parking, and we were told we were in the watershed district and needed to have a retention pond if we did any changes. Is that something that we still need to worry about?
I think if we expand the parking, that we would still... I, I think if we expand the parking, that we would still need to do some type of water retention if, because of increasing the hard surface out there. Our plan in this phase of remodeling is that we're not going to, that we don't need to expand the parking as part of this first phase. And I think that's largely because we're seeing the, the numbers of people that just choose to livestream. We don't have the demand for parking like we did originally. But we know that we can do that in the future when we need to.
Thank you so much for the committee. What a wonderful job. And I know it was a lot of work. The one question I had, was there any discussion on a church library?
We have not talked about that recently. We, we definitely had that feedback last time. And, and it was interesting to, Robert, I don't remember Robert's last name, that used to attend, moved back to California, told us about, he used to attend Unity Tucson. And Jeannie and I go to Unity for, or to Tucson area for a couple of months every winter. We stopped and visited that church. They have an amazing, large bookstore and gift shop, and I've got pictures of that. And they also have a library where church members can bring their Unity books that they want to share. And then they're just available for members to borrow and check out. And, and I've got pictures of that as well, too. I think it's a really creative idea. Partly, part of what we would need is somebody to set up and organize it and manage it. So write your name down on your sheet and you can, you can help, you can help us with that.
So we have another question from the livestream audience and Larry asks, will the city require us to add parking?
Uh, no. There, there is a guideline that, that, and I don't remember the numbers exactly right now. It all depends on the number of seats that you have in the sanctuary. And I think it's a three-to-one ratio that, that you need to have one parking spot for every three seats in the sanctuary. So, no, that would not be a requirement right now to add more parking. That's a good question. Hans? Oh, I'm sorry, Glenn?
A couple of questions, actually. The large room for giving receptions and things, that went away with this plan, correct?
Oh, from, compared to the original remodel plan, yes.
The, the east wall there, the last plan did not require removing the wall because of the bulge. They said they could deal with it. The opinion on that changed and it now must be replaced?
Uh, the architect gave us two options. That we could either strengthen that wall, but the plan that they told us would add, I think it was six columns that are 16 inches deep and like another foot and a half or two wide on the inside of the wall. So, and I think that was about $30,000 and about $90,000 to replace it. So included in the budget number that Reverend Pat talked about, we thought that the better option was to replace it rather than lose space on the inside and have six or eight new large columns on that back wall.
Another question, the cost of nine-month temporary rental for gathering, is that included in the 2.5 million?
Um, no, it's not, at this point.
I will openly admit that I'm thinking way outside the box now. But 10 or 20 years down, down the road, could we add a balcony in this room without having to change the height of the ceiling?
That's a good question, Hans. I don't, I don't know. It's something that we could certainly ask the architect about. Again, jot a note down for us and we'll take a look at that. Great questions. Anybody else? Yep.
I just have a comment about seating. And in a lot of offices that I've frequented.
Can you hold the mic up closer?
Sorry. In offices that I frequented in the last year and a half, I've noticed that the chairs are getting much deeper. And I know that you're planning to widen the seats, but some of those chairs make it really difficult for people who are short to sit comfortably. And I know people are getting larger, taller. And I have a granddaughter who's already over six feet and she's 14.
Yep.
But, you know, it's, I would really like to see somebody work seriously about comfort.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. And again, we haven't picked out the seating yet. One of the things I'm, that I, I like about what the architects have told us that they've done in the past is that with upholstered auditorium-style seats and the seats that they're thinking of, that they've told us about, when you fold the seat part down, the seats are actually very close together. So it, it almost is like a pew. So if you leave the arms up, you know, you still have room to, to kind of move around from seat to seat a little bit. And I just, I don't think that they're going to be that deep to be uncomfortable. Also, the fact that the seats flip up will just make it so much easier for people coming and going and to move to the, to the center of the seats and get past each other on the rows. But that's a good comment, something we'll, we'll take a look at.
And another thing is, I mean, the way the seats are now, if somebody comes in late, it's a real hassle trying to get by.
Right. So now people will be able to stand up and the seats will raise, flip up so that it'll be easier to allow people to pass.
Thank you.
Yeah, Robin?
So with the stadium seating, is it going to be attached to the floor or will it be movable for, to reconfigure if it's necessary for any special event?
Yeah, our team talked about that. And because we're still planning to have a gradual slope on the floor, the auditorium-style seats do need to be attached. And we did debate, you know, do we want a flat floor in the sanctuary with seats that we could move around and reconfigure or take out and, you know, use this for other purposes? And I think the consensus on the team was that we still like this style of sanctuary with the fixed seating, auditorium-style seating, we thought was most comfortable and what most people wanted.
With this plan, the footprint of the building will not change, right?
No, we're adding, I, we're adding, I think it's about 2,200 square feet with the new addition on two floors. So we're adding about, I think somewhere around 1,100 square feet to the footprint of the building to the west.
And the mance with the previous plan, I think that was going to go away. The mance is still not.
Because the footprint of the previous building was so much larger and then we were, we were wrapping parking all the way around the building. You're right, that was the plan originally. And again, at some point, which I'm hopeful about, when we have so much attendance that we need more parking, our plan would potentially be to, to expand the parking over to where that house is now. Okay, I think that's it. Reverend Pat?
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I want to just make a couple of comments before we move on to 2022. You know, the building, it will be, in this plan, it will be, the building will be closed for about nine months, more than likely. The church will not be closed. Let me be clear about that. You know, the church, it will not be closed. We have found out that we can do church virtually. We can do it from our home offices. And I, I envision us finding a place together on a Sunday during that time period as well. So just take a breath on that and know that, as far as I'm concerned, the way my life is, the church is open about 24 hours a day. So it's really good. It's good. The other thing I want to just point out is that, yes, our seats are a little, we have few less, less seats, just a few less seats. But has anybody been to church here lately? Have you noticed that we don't need all these seats right now? And I think that it's because we're going into a new style of ministry and that's a hybrid ministry. And, you know, right now we're saying, okay, we're, we're third here and two-thirds streaming or whatever. But I've had people share with me, even when the pandemic is over, that they will be with us part-time in person and part-time streaming. And these people that stream, my dear friends, they are dedicated members of our church. They are dedicated members that continue to be a huge part of it. I love the library idea, you know, and there's things up here that Mike could still be adjusted. I like the idea of not only a print library, but also a virtual library as well, that, keeping that hybrid church as well. And, and the parking, not extended right now, but it's, as Mike pointed out, at this point, we don't need it. We don't see the need for it either. As we should say, thank God for courage, Kenny. Thank God for them because they allow us to park there. And we should be so lucky to need parking real soon. Do you know what I'm talking about? Yeah. So the theme for going forward, the theme for 2022 is the courage to imagine. The courage to imagine, that was not picked just by accident. We're going to need your power of imagination this next year, you know? And so the, the, each and every month, we will have the courage to imagine something differently each month. Also, we would, and we will be introducing, we'll actually be introducing new groups called connection groups. And these, these groups, starting in January of 2022, they are different from our adult education. They, we have, we will still keep a very robust adult education program in place and we will add small connection groups. Some of you might have experienced that in our book groups during the fall season. But also we'll have groups of special interest that you might be interested in. So I'm excited about that. And not only will Reverend Tony be the cheerleader for adult education, but she will be the cheerleader for, also for these connection groups. Also in February coming up, we elect two new board members, two new board members. So this is an important time, in my opinion, for us to be very conscious of our election process. The nominating committee has already met and we will begin that process so that we will present to you candidates, I feel, that are well-qualified in order to see us through this process. As you know, a candidate, a board member serves for three years. So it's important that we elect board members that are going to see us through this process. Also, in 2022, we'll have the completion of our feasibility study under the direction of Horizons. Remember, they started and then in March of 2020, they closed it down. They will complete that study for us, as Mike indicated, and give us a, a number that they feel that we can, we can raise as a congregation. And then there's an important part of 2022, and that's that decision point. That decision point on whether we're going to remodel or not remodel. Once that decision point is made, and I'm affirming that it will be made to go forth, then we will begin in 2022, also a capital campaign. One minor thing that I failed to mention is that I will be on sabbatical for January the first through March the 31st. I'm excited about that, as you know. I am blessed that this congregation allows me to do sabbatical once every five years. And my last sabbatical was, ended up about half sabbatical and about half sick leave. So let's affirm, this will be totally 100% sabbatical, okay? Then, you know, the good news is I am well. I'm still excited about doing ministry and I'm excited about being here. And so during this sabbatical, my dear friends, we have a full staff in place. We have a full staff in place and that is absolutely wonderful. We have two other ministers that's here. We have an executive director that runs a tight ship. And we also have some great staff members as well. So all will be well. And the reason I wanted to take this now is because I think it's really important that I do this during the first part of the year, not only because it's cold, but also because as we get into the year, we will be going down that road of a capital campaign. And I feel like my presence here is needed for that as well. At least that's what I'm told. So with that, guys, I want to just turn this over to someone that's led us bravely for the last two years. She has led us through thick and thin and I am so appreciative of her and the difference that she is making in this community. Would you please welcome our board president, Margie Elson?
Thank you, Reverend Pat. That's a lot of great information. It's really great to see you all here and to know that people are streaming with us. But I wanted to start by just saying thank you. So I have so much gratitude, starting with Reverend Pat. Imagine this process without Reverend Pat. I, I don't even want to go there. This has been, we are experiencing the ebbs and flows of life. So we were never promised that we were going to avoid pain or that life wasn't going to present challenges. That was never what this is about. Our spiritual connection is about being with God as we go through the ebbs and flows of life. And I'm so grateful to have Reverend Pat as our senior minister, as we've experienced a lot of ebbs and flows in the last couple of years and we have more to come. I also want to thank the staff, the whole staff. The staff has kept the, the doors open and the lights on and they do it in a way that just has me shaking my head all the time. I, I don't know how they do it. We're so grateful. We're so blessed and we thank them for that. And I thank the board. We have an amazing board of trustees. And, and we also have been helping, keeping the doors open and keeping the lights on. But what's been fun is we, that wasn't enough. We didn't want to just keep the doors open. We didn't want to just keep the lights on. We have a vision to help transform the world and we got to do that by having the right facilities and, and continuing the work that we're doing and continuing to expand. And we're not going to let the current conditions slow us down. It just means we're going to redirect and that's absolutely what we've been doing. And so that's what we expect to look forward to. As we go on, we will continue this great work and we will continue to grow. And as you heard today, the, some of the things that we're just going to be dealing with through the end of this year and next year is thinking about regathering and what our protocols are and how we're going to continue to be safe and continue to deliver church. And now that we're becoming experts at, at what it takes to deliver hybrid church, because that's our, that's the world anyway. We, we're transforming the world and so our audience has always been a hybrid audience. There are people that are here in the seats and there are people on the other side of the world. And so we deliver church to all of that. And so we're going to continue to be safe and deliver hybrid church and grow the church through looking at remodeling. The, one of the things that stuck in my mind, Bika talked about an architect comment. The architect comment that stuck in my mind when we were interviewing architects was somebody said, I, I've counted 16 levels in this facility. He said, that's a record in my career. He's never been in one place that had 16 different levels. And we promised 100% accessibility and we will have 100% accessibility when we have shovels in the ground and I will look forward to that. Meanwhile, we'll continue to, to manage the ebbs and the flows and we will deliver music and deliver education and the staff will continue and to do great work. And we're so grateful for all of you. So the other piece that's in this play is that you've been here with us and you continue to be here with us and we thank you for that. And we want to stay connected. So I love the, the groups that are starting. Connections was actually one of the strategies that we identified several years ago for, great, we, we are where we are. What does it look like to keep moving? And one of them was conscious connections. And so I love that we're doing that consciously in the world that we're in. So I thank everyone so much for the participation and the love and the blessings. It's God man, this is God in person. This is what it feels like to me. Thank you for all of that. And so just wanted to close and open it up to more Q and A, any questions or comments on any of the topics that we've talked about today?
I'm just curious if you folks have already scouted out some locations for possible, like when the building is under development and construction? And if there are some that you really like and feel excited about?
So I'm going to speak for my colleagues and say yes, and I don't know that it would be appropriate to mention any right now. But I also will remind you that we had been down this path already. So we were much farther along in some ways and we had already been doing that. We also were looking at the potential of not even being in this space and what would that look like? So it's the due diligence that's absolutely on the plan that we're just continuing. So it's the due diligence that's absolutely on the plan that we're just continuing to work through.
If anybody has any ideas.
Oh, pencil and paper.
Or if you have a question. The Orpheum Theater.
Okay, so for anybody that didn't hear, the the question is, or the comment was, if you have ideas about that, jot them down. And then someone just did a shout out for the Orpheum Theater. Thank you, Adam.
Why not? My question is, 2.5 million is the target, and I'm wondering how much of the reserve we have are you thinking that we would use towards that 2.5 million?
And again, we're, the, all those conversations are happening, and we're not there yet. And so we've been taking this methodically because for a while, we wanted to make sure that we were going to do this. And if we were going to do this, what was it going to be like? First of all, we started with our goals. We said, we are absolutely going to be 100% accessible, we're going to have a welcoming place, we're going to have the several goals that we had identified years ago and then in the last several years. And then it was a, so that was the what. And then it's been the how, and we've been knee-deep in the how. And so having plans ready for today was something that 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 we've been on a path for. And then the next step is Reverend Pat talked about the feasibility study and the capital campaign. And all of those decisions then will come combined together to to help us decide. And the finance team, Sherry's here, talks about it, and the board talks about it pretty much every time we gather now. Anybody else want to share anything from the group?
Well, I can offer that.
Can we get, do you want to come up here, Sherry?
We do maintain levels of reserve for operating, and we will not drop below that as far as taking money out of our current reserves. We do keep things an emergency fund, a capital improvement fund. Those things will continue, our income will continue. So, you know, there is some part of that million dollars that we have in the bank that we can contribute to the new facility, but we will maintain the the funds that we have in place.
So my second question is.
And I know this sounds really mercenary, but I'm going to go there. So when the capital campaign is doing the feasibility study, I'm assuming they're going to say, just how much money can we get out of everybody? And then from that, figure out which, you know, how much money, as opposed to, we need to get to a number, can we get to that number? And I'm I'm thinking in abundance, I'm just asking the question. Absolutely. Reverend Pat, do you want to take the microphone?
Many of you, many of you have been through a feasibility study before. And so it's a cross-section of our congregation, as they do this, as you know, for, this is their job. And they come back to us and say, this is what we feel like with our communication, that we feel like you can raise for this building. So that's what they would do. And my goal is to have a realistic number that we can raise. And I'm thinking from prosperity consciousness as well. You know, I'm grateful at this point that we're dealing with 2.5 and not 5.2. You know, to be quite honest with you, I'm grateful about that because I see church changing rapidly, see it changing rapidly. And so I don't know if I answered your question or not, but I don't want, I don't want us to be in a position where we cannot meet operating budgets and deliver the fantastic programs that we deliver here. I have seen too many churches go down a road and get themselves over water and not being able to deliver the processes and the programs and the services. That is not what I want to do. I want to be the outstanding community that we are, realizing that the building is important. It is such an important tool. And at the same time, the building is not our ministry. The ministry is you, the people. So I hope I answered a little bit about that. And I will share with you what I share with our our membership class, almost every membership class, when they ask questions. I say, you know, we here at Unity Minneapolis, we can have anything we want, anything. We can have the sky. We have anything we want here as long as we have the consciousness to support it. You know, so we can have whatever we need here in the way of a building as long as we have the consciousness to support that. And I, and that, I believe that we do. I believe that we do. And so I am, I'm grateful, you know, that, and, you know, I won't be here all of my, I don't know how long I'll be here. Let me just be clear about that. I'm not planning on going anywhere. But the next minister, I do not want to leave with a mortgage that they cannot handle. Does that make any sense? Absolutely. So my dear friends, don't start any rumors. I have not turned in my resignation. All is well.
We have people, we have people online. You know about sound systems, Hans.
I want to compliment you and the architects and the planners and the board. I, my mother-in-law belongs to a Catholic church out in the middle of Wisconsin, and they built a crystal cathedral, and it doesn't have a kitchen. This is a very reality-based, people-purposed plan, and you have a lot to be proud of.
Thank you, thank you. I will say we've had a lot of reality-based conversations.
Just a little clarification for me. Does a feasibility study entail money questions only? Doesn't this already say that it's a feasible plan?
We believe that it is a feasible plan.
We believe that that is a very feasible plan, based upon even a partial, a partial feasibility study. And so we will, we will get confirmation on that as we get into the new year, Glen. And then they will let us know what they think we can do. The board and the congregation will decide on go, not go, and then we'll start a capital campaign. I don't know if that answered your question or not. Okay?
I just want to express my ravenous excitement and immense gratitude to all of the very intelligent people that are putting this plan together. I am so excited and deeply grateful that we have the people that are able to do all this. Thank you.
And Adam, we have the people that can make it happen. We have the people that can make it happen. There will be naming opportunities. I'm sure that's part of the process as well. So if you'd like to, if you'd like to see me after this service today, by all means, let me know. You guys good? You know, I learned recently that you guys is not appropriate, and I am working on that. So would you just?
Good job, you have a mental health upgrade.
I know, it's, but I'm learning that it's not the most appropriate thing in the world. But thanks for being so patient with me as I learn not to use it inappropriately. But it's a learning process. It's a curve. So when you, when I hear you guys, don't send me any more emails, I'm working on it, okay? I'm working on it. Let's go. Let's just take a moment and center ourselves, giving thanks for each other, giving thanks for those that came in through livestream, giving thanks for all the the ideas, the questions, the answers. We bless each other and we bless this community as we go forth to do what is ours to do. And we do it with absolute great love, great love. And we say, thank you, thank you, God. And so it is. Amen. Let's have a round of applause.